And at this time, I will welcome back everyone here. And I will turn the meeting over to Mr. McDonald. He's going to read our prayer list and also lead us in prayer if you will, Mr. McDonald.
Yes, sir. Uh, the prayer list, we have the Manning family, Deanna Shelders, Joe Taylor. Hope Joe's doing better.
Aight.
Mrs. Scotty Lewis, Danny Claire, Mr. Jack Williams, Jude McCallum, Courtney Taylor, Amanda Vaughn, Becky Cookston, Katie Foster and newborn twin girls. Congratulations. Rachel Kelly and family, her mother's passed away, and Mr. Huey Gregory.
That's prayer.
Thistle, my cousin Tommy.
Tommy?
Thistle.
Yeah, no, Tommy.
Yep.
Lord, thank you so much for this day and blessings, Lord, and the opportunity to come here and serve our, our community. And I pray you give us wisdom in every decision that we make that might be pleasing to you and that, uh, we thank you for the goodness that you show us every day and for the blessings you've always showed our country and hope ask you to continue so in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Praise the witches through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for witches' hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a, uh, good short meeting tonight. Uh, I hope you've all had a chance to look more packet. Um, the, uh, have like say, uh, Mr. Manning's absent tonight, his mother's not doing good at all, and, uh, first item on the agenda is a consent items. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we, Dr. Smith County High School request a, they take the trip to Ireland? Do we need to discuss that?
Uh, if, oh, we have, you want to pull that and Mr. McDonald to discuss it?
I think we're going to vote on it again.
Okay, alright. Okay, we'll pull.
Well, you don't have to. You don't have to pull it. You got some.
It, it's in the consent items. If you, unless you do want to discuss.
If you want to discuss something else, we'll pull it and vote on it. But if, if you're, if everybody's satisfied with it, I will do a roll call on it and that way everybody will know. Uh, but I have, she's here tonight. If anybody has questions and if you feel more comfortable, we'll pull it and vote on it separate.
I think we should.
Okay. Alright. Uh, we're going to pull that one item and the rest of them, uh, we've got a motion second. Uh, any more discussions on it? If not, all in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Like saying? Uh, now, with that one consent item, that is the, uh, trip.
Tony, I didn't get the vote or it was over. I didn't get the vote.
Oh.
Um, I just went ahead and put it through.
Okay, okay. Uh, now, uh, do, uh, we're going to talk about that. First of all, do I have a motion to, uh, for this trip?
Yes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Now, we'll open it up for discussion.
I would, uh, like for the representative to explain exactly how involved they're going to be working cattle.
Okay, alright.
If they're going to be around them in a position where they might be kicked or something.
Okay, sure.
I'd be fine with them taking a trip to Ireland.
Right.
But there's some danger involved.
I understand. Now, uh, Mr. Smith, would you?
Yes, Tony, you guys asked me to talk to some other directors because we had several snow days and all that. And I can't remember now which one, but I did sit down with the director and they were doing this same trip and actually cattle, but it was in Europe. It wasn't, it wasn't, uh, this particular, it was a different area. But he talked highly of it, but it made me feel good if there was somebody else doing the same exact with this company. So, uh, I didn't get to talk to a lot, but I did, I think, well, I talked to you outside and I talked to Robin too. You know, there's different ways, you know, you could, you know, I, I don't see a lot of difference in, uh, my son being in welding class or ag. Like you're bringing people out to learn to artificial breeds, I don't think there's a lot of that. But you could do it with a disclaimer or you could do it with a, uh, am I, is that the right terminology?
Release a lot.
Uh, uh, you could do it with, like, go on a trip and not touch cattle. There's different ways to, you could probably still do it if you didn't feel comfortable. So, keep that in mind if you want to build it, how you want to build it.
The people that have mentioned it in my district have said that they don't think that's wise to let the kids go out of the country and be in a situation where they could be hurt, need medical care. And, like I said, if you say, give them some, uh, idea of exactly what they're going to be doing, then, then that would.
Would, would this company be okay? Would they consider that, that the kids could go on the trip and could basically learn watch and not have to physically be in a pen with cattle?
Absolutely. So, from my understanding and speaking with, uh, there's a lady named Kate that I speak with, um, to work on this. Of course, the information I provided with y'all last time I was here, and again, thank you for having me back. Uh, and I have attached it to this as well, uh, is like the travel agenda, so it's a ten day trip, there's a travel agenda on it. That's a working agenda though, so if there was something we needed to remove from it, we obviously could, or I should say, agenda itinerary, I guess, um, so the travel itinerary. Uh, so if I said, hey, my district is uncomfortable with these children, you know, given the opportunity to work with cattle or whatever, I'm sure we could replace that with something else. Uh, as part of the tour revolves, you know, I guess, kind of on the same things, there's castles and stuff like that that we get to go tour and see. There's also the opportunity to have that hands-on experience, but I think that still comes from observer standpoint as well. Uh, so if there's a situation that perhaps I'd be uncomfortable for a student, even though I don't think I would put us in any situation like that, um, I could say, hey, kids, you know, we're just going to watch this. Um, and I would give, you know, the students that decide to attend that opportunity as well. Uh, there are days, you know, that we do things in class that, you know, not everybody is super comfortable with. Now, I do try to push kids outside of their comfort zone. I think that's important. That's a way that we grow and we learn and we develop our skill set, but, you know, um, I previously taught biology before teaching this class, and so the last thing we would do is we would dissect. And some people do not like dissecting. It is not their cup of tea. And so I would tell those students, I'd say, hey, please pick your partner as someone who doesn't care to have their hand in the frog and doing those things. And so I want you to help that person and I want you to hand them the tools and all. So you're still a working component of that partnership, but I understand that you're uncomfortable with that. Uh, and I think that that would be the same way to approach this situation as well. So if you're uncomfortable with working cattle or even, you know, being there, uh, then don't. Uh, you don't necessarily have to. Um, but again, if that's something that as a whole, you're going to say, hey, we're not going to let you go and this is the line and the sand, then I say, we just move the line. And I say, you know, Kate, I really appreciate the travel itinerary that's planned for us, but can we make some adjustments to it and maybe find us something else, um, that my district is more comfortable with?
And, Robin, I guess the question too, if, does it need to be, if that's something the board want to do, that be as a whole group or if I wanted to individually sign for mine, would I, would that still relieve the responsibility of the board if I wanted to sign for mine?
As, as much as possible, certainly. I mean, you could create or I could create a release of liability, you know, that if they wanted to participate in that part of the trip, um, you know, then, then you could have them sign a release of liability. The other thing to address what Dr. McDonald said, um, you know, as far as getting hurt in a foreign country, you could also require that they have, um, you know, medical insurance. You can get travel insurance that, you know, if you had to be evacuated out. I've traveled with that when I travel internationally. I always have something that would get me back to the United States if I were to be injured or sick or, you know, have some, some issue. You could require that of your students. Uh, you can get a policy for about $250 to cover an entire year of travel, uh, maybe a little cheaper for, you know, a, a younger kid. So it's not that large of an expense for a pre-bid benefit, but that would be something, you know, if the concern is that they might get hurt, you know, not be able to get home or need treatment, that might be something that you could, um, address.
My concern is if they're going to be handling large cattle, or especially if they're getting around the backside.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Getting kicked.
Yeah.
And if, if they're not going to do that, then I'm, I'm fine. If they're going to be in a situation where they could be kicked, I'm going to vote against it.
Well, I think, to, to your point too, I, I think, you know, there's a lot of ways they could get hurt on the trip, on that trip without, in being involved with cattle. And I mean, that could even happen like Mr. Smith said in welding class or, um, you know, e- even here. But it does make it a much greater concern when they're out of the country.
The people that have talked to me said, I can't believe they're going to go over there and be around cattle because what's going to happen if they get kicked?
Well, I think working cattle there may be different than working cattle out here where you're, you know, where daddy's told you to stand in the field and, you know.
The parents, the parents know what they're going to do, don't they?
They would, they would obviously be, but my guess, my question to you, two questions. About, one, do you make the policy then that nobody, or do you make the policy that I want to sign for mine to do it?
That would be at the board's discretion.
Okay. I think they need to understand that. And then, my question for you too, is would you still consider it to be highly educational if they didn't get in and work the cattle and so on, it should be learning?
Absolutely. I, I think that every bit of this trip is a wonderful experience to provide, um, for children. I did provide for you guys their certificate of liability insurance. Travel insurance for each student is built into this trip. And EF has a $50 million, um, policy that goes in with this, so this is on with their trip. Uh, I spoke with Kate and she, you know, told me that, you know, if something happened to a child that they would be taken, you know, into care and, uh, their health insurance would be considered first and then this policy would be effective, everything like that. Uh, I can't say what would happen because I haven't gone. I, I don't know. I can't speak to the future or anything like that, but it's kind of like statistics, you know, everyone's like, I'm scared to get in an airplane, what if it crashes? And they say, you're more likely to be in an automobile accident six miles from your home than to be in a plane crash. And honestly, these children are more likely to maybe roll an ankle stepping off the bus than they are to get kicked by a cow. But again, that's not to say it couldn't happen or anything like that, but we just don't know. We can't predict the future. But we do work with this travel company and make sure that all the boxes are checked and hopefully there are no problems. And from my understanding, they have a fantastic 24/7 safety response team that is available to you all the time. So if I needed support, if a child felt like they needed support, they have access to call that number two. They don't have to come find me and say, hey, this kid I think I need. They can do it for themselves. If a parent is on that trip with them, they can also. Uh, she told me that if there was to be an incident that the tour director would not leave the group, like their job is to be with that group 24/7 all the time. So if a student did need to leave for medical care, that I would leave with that student. We would get medical care. If other attention needed to be directed to it, they would send more people because everywhere that they send, um, students for these learning opportunities, there are people that live and work there, uh, for this company. Like that's their job. They're kind of the eyes and ears on the ground and that force. So if I needed additional support, someone would come to my aid.
Mr. Lewis?
Just, just a couple of things and I, what I'm, what I'm wanting to do is kind of back up a little bit to the last conversation that you were here. And you correct me anytime I'm wrong, okay? Because, I mean, that's frequent sometimes. Um, the package you gave us before, as I recall, um, didn't all the parents sign off on this? The parents signed off on their children going, correct?
Yes, and I will.
Uh, I mean, that was in the package we got before, right?
Yes.
So they've got parental consent.
I don't think, I don't think they have signed off yet.
No one has signed up officially, no. But every parent would.
Before, they're going on a trip or something.
You could just come on the bus and go. No, so it was.
My point is they're, they're in there to sign off on, they're prepared to sign off on it.
Yes, so every parent would be aware of every aspect of this trip.
And then, of course, we've got liability insurances included in to, to try to, you know, we don't want anybody injured, obviously, but I mean, I might get injured walking to the truck out here tonight. Um, but it was a pretty thick packet of information that you gave us that covered a lot of those things outside of what if, but, you know, if is the largest two-letter word that there is. I mean, if I get home tonight, but I, and I really appreciate what Doc says and, and I appreciate what some of his constituents say, but I still, you know, for me, I, I think that you're very, um, coordinated with all this. I, I'm really impressed with the way that, I mean, questions start coming and you start handing out information. You're very coordinated with it. You have your hand on top of it and I have a lot of confidence that you will make sure that the right thing is done. But then finally, um, I mean, this is not the only, you know, we've already, the board has already allowed two other groups to go out of the country and, Greg, correct me anytime I'm wrong, uh, we've already got two other groups that we're, we're allowing out of the country. Um, I don't want anybody to be treated any differently or anything like that. Um, I won't, I'd like to see everybody treated the same. But, um, I don't, uh, I, I don't, I appreciate concern about cattle. You know, I was raised around cattle. I can a lot of people in here know as much time as most of them, but I, I don't know how you can stand in front of us and say that absolutely will not ever happen. I, I mean, I don't think so, but, um, how are they going to glean as much from it if they're not around them?
Hopefully, if I call Kate and say, hey, I need to take out this piece of the itinerary, they'll find something else, um, equally educational, but what you guys would deem less dangerous to fill in with that.
Well, and here's my last question, unless that last comes up and then I'll hush because I get long-winded. Um, I mean, I realize that this is like a school trip or whatever. Is it, is it actually? I mean, there's not, school's not in session. The parents are going to sign off on all this stuff. Is it actually a, a school trip?
No, sir, it's actually not. That was one of the questions that was sent to me, so it's actually on the back of that first page that essentially you'd like to come with the information for that. So, uh, EF requires actually no school sponsorship, school support, board approval. I think those are one of the ways you got.
That's, that's my question.
But, so for me, uh, I made the assumption that if I was advertising this trip in my classroom and my recruitment base was my students, that I should come and say, hey, this to me is no different than when I say, can I take my students to state convention or national convention? I would respectfully like to ask you, do you mind if I take this group of students with me? So that way, everybody's aware of it. You're not at the grocery store and someone says, hey, you seen them kids in Ireland? I seen them on Facebook. What are they doing? You're like, kids in Ireland? Like, that's crazy. So everyone's aware of it, you know? Um, but actually, no, I need nothing from you in that sense, and I don't mean that rude, but I just thought that since I was hanging a poster up in the school, Mr. Apple and I had that conversation about it, and he said, write a board proposal. And so I did. Uh, but honestly, it's no different than when somebody comes and plays travel ball in our gym. We give them that facility, so I essentially am just using that facility to hang my poster. So at the end of the day, no, I do not need your approval as far as EF is concerned. I would like your approval just as far as I'm concerned, as far as Smith County High School is concerned, because I think that that's a good working relationship.
Well, I, I think that speaks to your level of integrity and professionalism, but, but, and I do appreciate you doing that, but in my heart, everything I've read, everything that you gave out, I'm not content that you, the board is required to approve this at all. But that you could do, you could do it without our approval, you know, from what I've seen.
Can I interrupt a minute?
Yeah, please do.
Sure.
You gotta be telling me that she can take an organized class of FFA kids without our approval to a foreign country. Is that what you're saying? Basically, if I, you said that, I'm just, I'm not trying to.
It's not in during school. It's, it's in summer. It's not during school time. It's just, she's doing this as.
It's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement and she's doing this as a courtesy to us, to us to know what's going on.
Well, you know, I, I had a question for you earlier and I'm going to follow up with it. So what is the criteria that you're requiring of a student? Let's say a freshman would love to go, but he don't have the means. I know it's going to be a fundraiser, correct?
Yes, sir.
So are you going to open this up for enrollment for as many kids that would like to go? Are you, have you got it to a specific number, 10, 15? I mean, have you got it?
I don't have a specific number. Um, I ideally think about 10 to 15 is probably a good number of students to travel with, especially, uh, for a first-time trip and everything. There's a lady at a school system in Kentucky, they just got back from this trip this summer, um, and she has some great testimonies and stuff about it. Uh, and she travels every year, does a trip every year with 30-plus kids. And I'm like, ooh, dang, like, you're loving it up. Like, that's wonderful. Uh, I'd love to see people give that opportunity to their students, but there's necessarily no criteria, no cutoff, uh, because it isn't really a school trip. So when I travel specifically with my FFA students on trips, you know, a teacher signs off that, yes, it's okay to miss my class, I check their grade average. I had a young man who was supposed to compete in forestry for me and I told him he couldn't go. I said, you're, you're failing English class right now. And only just because he wasn't trying to step in, that's crazy to me. And I said, you aren't going. And guess what? He turned in his work and he was ready to go the next time we were going somewhere. But I can't necessarily set that criteria on this because it isn't really a school trip. Now, I outreach to the advisor at Torsville High School and I said, hey, you got any kids that would be interested in this trip? I'm trying to organize this. It's, it's a community-wide opportunity. But if I go put an ad in the newspaper for it, I might get some real interesting clientele and people that don't necessarily need to be with our students. So to keep my recruitment base at a, you know, a positive level and an interactive level of who's going to benefit the most from this trip, that's why it's great when I can hang my posters in the school system. I did outreach with Ms. Gracie Griffin over at the middle school. I even went in and talked to her students today because I thought these middle school students will beat high school students by the time we take this trip. And I had an eighth grader the other day that, you know, talked to me about it. He was interested in it. He wants that opportunity. So it's a community-wide thing. It's open. If any of y'all would like to go, you're welcome to come and go. I'd love to have you. Um, so it's not just for Smith County High School or Smith County FFA. It's open to all students within this community.
I think that would answer Mr. McDonald's question. And Mr. Smith brought it up, which is an excellent idea, is have, uh, Ms. Moore draw up something that says, does your child want to interact with cattle or does not? And have that parent or parents, or hopefully both parents, sign it saying, no, I don't want my child interacting with cattle. Or, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I'm, I'm fully aware of what's going on and yes, I want it to happen. Then when that, that particular part of the trip comes up, then you can look at that child and say, now, listen, your mother and father says they do not want you interacting with these cattle. You will have to stay back away from this. Or the rest of these have had this, have had a waiver signed that they can do this and look like to me that simplifies the problem.
If you think we could legally satisfy, that would satisfy, I think, what Mr. McDonald's is saying.
Yeah.
I'd like to make this comment. If she doesn't need our approval, why are we entertaining this? Just, let's be honest with each other.
Well, I think a couple, I think one thing, she.
She's doing it out of respect.
It's good bragging for your program. I think it's great PR for her program, what she's trying to do, you know what I mean?
And it's, she's doing it out of respect for the school board, I think. I mean, uh, the, and I appreciate her coming before us.
And I'd like to interfere before I forget it. I think one thing it does, you might have a good point while ago, if you go through the school approval, it keeps you limits on letting anybody that, somebody from Overton County want to go or some, or somebody you didn't think would be good to be around our students, you say, no, it's a school.
I mean, I like to travel with people that I know, I feel safe being with. I think that our students are safe being with. That matters to me.
It does give you some more authority, you know what I mean?
So if a student comes to me in my district says I want to go, and they're.
You send them to her.
Well, I mean, let's just say they're a freshman at Goresville, but they're not in ag. Are they going to be allowed to go?
Yes, sir. It's, it's a learning opportunity for everyone. And it might be a student that really doesn't think they have any interest in agriculture and that's totally fine, but they might come back mesmerized by it. One of my favorite things is having students in my classroom, a lot of times freshmen, because they come in, they register for classes and they're not sure they want to take them. So they sign up for ag and they're like, I don't know what I'm doing here. And by the end of the year, they love it. And I'm up here, they come back as a sophomore and they come back as a junior.
Are their parents paying for it or are you based upon?
Uh, both. Either way, it's acceptable. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more questions? If not, we're going to have a roll call on this. Uh, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Tesson?
Yes.
Mr. Enam?
Yes.
Mr. McCallum?
No.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning absent? Uh, Mr. McDonald?
How many yeses have they have to go?
I don't think you've really put a number on that. Have you, uh, the board?
From the board, he's up on the.
Oh, it's, oh, you're talking about how many it takes for it to pass? It takes five?
How many yeses have you got?
You've got one, two, three, four. One, two, three.
And you've not voted.
And I've not voted.
So if I'm going to pass, if I vote against it?
Well, my shoulders.
I want my shoulders voted.
You would have to vote for it.
It's a good question. It's crazy.
Well, how about I do this? Let's just back up. I'm going to vote yes.
Okay, I'm going to abstain. They still get to go. I'll make a donation.
Thank you, sir.
Motion, pass. You can go do what you need to do.
Thank you, John. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Nora. Um, coming in front of us, but wasn't necessary, speaks volumes of your character.
Well, thank you. I appreciate, I had several trips that come before you guys frequently. I had several through your children in class, so I appreciate the willingness and the ability to work with y'all. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
All right. Superintendent Actions. Uh, y'all had a chance to look at those. Any questions that y'all need to ask Mr. Smith about Superintendent Actions or you have something you'd like to add?
I've got two, three things I'd like to, if you guys want me to. Uh, one is, is, I think, Mr. Lewis, you brought this up. We had told the board and I think the county commission, but I think the county commission will be satisfied with the new, uh, budgeting situation like it is to ask the question. But you want us to bring back in front of you at some point what we wasn't a budget about the possibility of lights and different stuff? We'll try to have you detailed where we're at percentage-wise and at next month, if that's acceptable. Uh, if there's anything in particular y'all want between them, submit that and the board will have everything on it, okay?
I, I, I did for those of y'all that, that weren't at some of the budget, uh, meetings I, I, I did, for those of y'all that, that weren't at some of the budget meetings when we had this last round, we did, because the county commission, you know, struggled with, with our budget too. Of course, they're sitting in the same place we are, we just struggled with, with this item right here. But, but we promised them, we promised them at night, that as soon as our, we closed our books out for December, you know, and we saw mid-year where we were standing, we promised them that we would send that, get that back over to them. Now, you know, of course, there's financial committee now, they can see that just as easy as we can, but irregardless, we've made that promise, and I want us to keep it. So as soon as he has those numbers together, before we closed out in December, I, I would like for that to go to the Marion County Commission, because we've made that promise, and, and we're just as good as our word, and I, I think that we should keep it. That's why I asked him to do that.
Then, it'd been brought up, we talked about it about a year ago, doing maybe a leadership academy.
We did, and we've talked about that a lot.
And what it would be, we would try to recruit, we're a shocking percentage, our faculty has got 25 years or more, and it's just a matter of time, we're in a massive, well, we're in for coaches and administrators, and if we could recruit within, something I think would be, we can talk about that a lot more detailed at a retreat, but, but something I think maybe we should consider, maybe a little stipend, people want to go through that, and bring in people from colleges and, uh, uh, other successful administrators from across the state, retired people and so on, that could come in and talk, and, and see if we could maybe start getting people more interested in staying at home in, in this building within, kind of like we're doing now with teachers, grow your own, it'd be like we'd kind of start growing our own administrators, people had any interest at all in it. Another thing, that TSBA retreat is March the 18th, that's a great day, it's always open to the public, but it's, it's, it's much more private, because people aren't gonna come, gonna come here and sit all day. But if there's anything that you want to know, or I want Tammy to have for topics that day that you'd like to be more in-depth on, things you'd like for us to have pool for you to talk about, if you'll let us know, we'll have that on the agenda and have the materials pull up. Uh, if you do, please let Tracy or myself know, and we'll start getting, and we'll talk to Tammy as she's building the schedule. One, I appreciate your patience on these snow days, I'd say you're getting calls. We have 13 days, if anybody asks, you're not cheating the kids, you're not cheating people, because we, for years, most of systems are on what's called the snowmobile, and we've got about 13 days, I think, just built in with the teachers and the students actually coming, I think it's 20 minutes a day, I'd have to go back and see the exact numbers. So those are interchangeable days that can be used, if you don't use them, you just lose them. There's a lot of roads, they're still terrible in the county. We have some, you know, herbuses, like everybody would guess, herbuses are better than most systems, I think, but they're diesel, we do have some, we have been starting them the last two days, getting them ready. We're hoping we can get back in Thursday or Friday, but we still got some awful bad roads.
Yeah, I just say one thing.
Yes, sir.
I just, fellas again, and I'm sorry, I talk too much sometimes, Tammy's not here to remind y'all that, so. But I, I have badgered him about this leadership academy thing, or leadership, whatever, if we do it, we'll be called. And, and here's why it's on my mind so hard, through attrition, we've got a lot of people in our system that could go any day, and we don't know what teachers in our system might be, have an interest in being an administrator, a principal, or a assistant principal, or whatever role that might be. And, and I would just like for us to formulate some type of leadership thing, we've even talked about, he and I have even talked about, you know, once a month, meeting, if somebody from the Department of Education come and talk about, managerial duties in school systems and things like that, just people that could, that could benefit from. We don't know what we have out there until we've kind of fixed your pond a little bit. Or we might have some, but say, you know, I'm gonna be a principal someday, and they get in there and say, I, I don't want any part of that. But I, I think it's important for us to kind of have that in the background evolving, so that we always have a pool, and people get the same opportunities for, um, to choose from. I, I'm just afraid attrition will catch us someday, and we'll be saying, okay, well, you're, you're the new principal, congratulations, see you later, and, you know, we don't, I know we don't want to be caught like that, but they do the leadership Smith County thing, I think that's been highly successful. So I just wanted to try to kind of think about integrating something like that, maybe in the school system for our employees.
I think that's a great idea, maybe pick the employees that have exhibited leadership, and, and maybe by invitation, that they could get involved in that.
Exactly, just have, or have the board members.
The best ones in charge.
We, we went around a couple a year ago, when you'd be shot, a, a lot of them get their masters, but then they don't want, they go any further. We went around questioning, I think every one of them, if you remember, pulled, and it was a very, very small pool that showed any interest, but those aren't the one we've taken.
Right, and then also.
But we still, if we could get them involved, then maybe they would, you know what I mean?
And he gives.
I don't think it'll be, uh, I don't think we will have to cull any, I think it'll be, we'll be lucky to get a pool even going to them.
Okay, any other discussion?
Are we, are we in new business yet, or what?
Uh, we are fixing to get, but we're still in superintendent actions.
Okay.
And I think that's all we had on this, okay, now we're going into new business. New business is bid approval for diesel fuel. Does that have a motion on that, how about the motion?
I'll make a second.
Got a second, okay, uh, discussions?
Now, we.
Yes, sir.
Not questioning the price, but has this, has this been delivered yet, or is this to be delivered? Because I know we're not running our buses, and I know we're not.
Delivery on December 19th.
December 19th?
What's that?
December the 19th.
That was when this was?
Yeah, we have to bid and then buy.
So, I don't understand that 12/18, help me with that day, 12/18?
No, 12/19, is when, we have to bid it, then we buy it. And this has done been bought.
This has done been bought?
Yes.
I think it's the way the month fail, this particular month, probably, I don't think that's typical.
Normally, that's not typical, we usually bid it, buy it, and then approve it. But this right here, where this has failed.
Was we out of school that day or something?
It's during, it's during the, we, and I've tried to get her to do that, but she says she's more efficient, it's what, we could do it two cents above the rail, or, or we could do it, I don't know, six months, but she thinks she saves a lot of money, she puts a lot of work on herself, and to get these every month, but she thinks we're saving quite a bit of money by doing that because of the market.
The volatility of it, is that the reason she, is she doing it because, well, no, I'm, I'm, no, I don't understand the reason, but I'm all right with it, I just seen this date of 12/18, and I'm thinking, wait a minute, we're a month past that, and we're just now bidding out?
Well, I think it's because of whether, they're very, we're only got like three that bid anyway, and she didn't contact them all every month.
Right, because that's a trailer load of fuel out there, that's one trailer load, we save five more gallons, so, all right. I just wanted to get some clarification.
Okay, no problem, that's, that's what we're for there, any more discussion? If not, we're gonna have a roll call, uh, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Enid?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Yourself, yes. Uh, that's the only thing, we had a new business, uh, any discussion? I think Mr. Smith has went through everything on discussion. Annual policy review for January, I hope you've had a chance to look at all of that. Executive session, uh, Ms. Moore, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay, Ms. Moore does not have anything for executive session. Uh, if nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
When's our next meeting, we got?
Okay, it's right at the bottom, right there, it'll be February the 18th.
Where's he sitting at?
Okay, right here, right here.
Oh, it ain't on the computer, I'm looking at it.
Oh, okay, all right, you look at your board packet, and it's February the 18th, then the, uh, Mar- March 18th, which is the big all-day meeting.
Okay, that's the all-day meeting?
Yeah, that's March the 18th.
Oh.
February the 18th is just a regular meeting, and then all-day on March 18th.
I would like to mention this, I know, I know it voted in pass, but we'll have to watch the certificate, it was expired, it, it expired on 23rd of, it was issued on 10/13 of '22, and then expired on 10/1 of '23.
What's that?
This certificate for that trail.
Oh, okay, yes, sir, yes.
We'll have to, I wish it would be, they're there.
Okay.
She's going, she's going without her, her.
Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? McDonald, second, Joe, all in favor?
I have.
Post?
Post.